Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In three rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order and all other rules that are adopted by the council either at the organizational meeting or subsequent to that. Putting in this, there is one item to that we need to see if we can schedule a special meeting next week, see if there's a day. Councilor Holland, do you want to just give a summary of what the meeting, the purpose of it?
Yes, and maybe the representative from Union River Estates or Main Coast Mall could say something too, but basically, there's been an agreement made between our tax assessor and the city manager and the legal team about an assessment of the mall's property and the refund that is due them, and it seemed that this has been kicked along quite a while since 19 with abatement processes and such, and the people that own the mall are running out of a little bit of patience in waiting for this process to get kicked in. So when they found out that this was going to happen in August instead of July, that was just kind of the straw that broke the camel's back, and we're hoping to get a special meeting to see if we could expedite that for them and keep this deal intact.
So with that is, I'll just start with Monday, and we'll work our way through the week. Monday, not good. Tuesday.
I can do any day.
Tuesday's fine.
It's Tuesday, where, 6:00?
On the 25th.
I don't know what is in this room, though, so that's, well, they'll have to move. Okay. Council takes priority, so. It's called Council Chambers for a reason.
School boards here at 6:00, they can go to their facility if we have to.
Yeah, they frequently have.
How long is the meeting gonna take?
Can we do it the 26th instead, though, to sort of not to disturb them?
The 26th?
It's on Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
I cannot do that.
Or is there any way we could do 5:30 on the 25th?
Yeah, 5:30.
I don't anticipate it's going to take too long.
No, it shouldn't be too long. 5:30?
We can do that.
5:30 next Tuesday.
It's hard for me to get here, but I can, there's an 85% chance of making it here by 5:30.
Same, we may, 85%.
So we'll plan to start at 5:30, and we may delay it until you're both able to get here. So next Tuesday, 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, 619-23, regular council meeting and 630-23, special council meetings.
Move approval.
You have a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. Item five, city manager's report, Manager Moser.
Good evening, councilors. Couple of quick announcements, just want to make sure everyone is aware that the City Hall facilities and the library will be closed at noon time Friday, July 28th for the annual employee appreciation cookout. Just want to let everyone know that work has begun on Christian Ridge Road and will be continuing for the next several weeks. Tomorrow night, July 18th, starting at 5:00 PM, is the living and working event hosted by and located at Darling's Auto Mall. It starts at 5:00 PM. It's a public forum hosted by the Planning Department and the Economic Development Department. It's an opportunity to discuss topics related to quality of place and workforce retention, such as availability of housing, transportation, childcare, and diverse economic opportunities. There'll be light fare and snacks provided. Children are allowed to accommodate working parents, and in order to reserve a spot, please go to Eventbrite, which you can get through the city's website for more information. We have open seats on the following committees, the Arbor Commission, which we talked about last meeting, Historic Preservation Commission, Recreation Commission, Solid Waste Committee. If you have interest in any of those committees, please go to the city's website. And I'm proud and happy to announce that the Branch Lake water level has returned to normal, thanks to this lovely summer that we're having.
I think it's above normal now.
So all of that worry was for naught. But finally, on the Arbor Commission, just wanted to provide an update since it was on last month's agenda. We have put out information to the community trying to garner some interest in joining the commission. So far, we've had 160 views on the information, but only one application so far. So if you're interested in signing up for the Arbor Commission, please do so, so that we can determine whether or not we have enough interest from the community to bring that commission back.
That's just on a link on the website.
Correct, yes, and social media as well. That's all I have, sir.
Any questions? Item six, committee reports. Any councilors attend any recent committees? You always start.
I've got nothing. Due to, I think, city staffing changes, the application for the solid waste committee has not gone out yet, as we promised last month. Apologies for that, but be on the lookout, it should be coming out.
Yes, I will.
It's out, it's already out.
It's on the website.
People can go to the website and find it?
Yes.
All right, sign up, it's gonna be a blast. That's all.
I have something from the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, which is that there will be an event, kind of an expo, at the Norton Park on July 29th. Is that, do you think I have that, from, I think, 10 to noon? So if you want to gather more information about comprehensive plan and how to be involved, 10 to noon at the Norton Park on the 29th.
Any other committee reports? All right, seeing done. Item seven, citizens' comments. This is part of the agenda where any citizens can make a comment, may have roughly three minutes. You can speak on any topic you wish. If there's an item on the agenda that you wish to speak to, you can wait until that comes up and speak at that time and use this time for talking about something else. So if you're interested, just go to the podium, state your name, and speak away. Not a real mad rush yet. All right, seeing done. We will move on to item eight, presentation of awards. First award this evening, we'd like to present to Carolyn Ackerman. Carolyn Ackerman, presented with deepest appreciation for your devoted service to the City of Ellsworth Historic Preservation Commission, March of 2000 to June of 2022, and you will chair from 2001 to 2020.
I just wanted to say it's been an honor to provide some service to the City of Ellsworth, and I hope over these 22 years that we have raised awareness in the community, I hope, I think we have, in terms of the numbers of buildings that people are paying attention to and the history that goes with them. I also want to thank the city staff. I've worked with numerous city managers, clerks, and many other people in the city. There's a terrific bunch of people that work here. They've been courteous, kind, helpful, and very well-informed about things that we need to help with, so thanks to them, and all of you.
Thank you. David Hopkins.
He's not here.
Sorry, I shouldn't stand in your way. If you want. Chase Hardwood.
The City of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of achievement, Chase Hardwood, in recognition of his public works internship through HCPZ. Congratulations on all your hard work, presented this 19th day of June 2023.
And the next two, Andrew Moser is going to come up here and help, but if we could have Officer James Hazard and Corporal Robert Angelo, please come forward.
So, yeah, so first, I'll start. These two officers this evening are going to receive a letter of commendation from the Ellsworth Police Department and also certificates for their actions, and I'm just going to describe the events that took place on July 1st, 2023, at approximately 10:50 PM. Corporal Angelo and other officer responded to the report of a motor vehicle crash on the Shore Road. The call reported that the vehicle involved left the roadway and was in the Union River. When officers arrived, they located the vehicle submerged in the water. The water level was high enough to cover the dashboard of the truck. Once the vehicle was found, officers were able to hear a person moaning from somewhere south of the pickup. Officers followed the sound and located the male operator of the truck, now yelling for help, splashing and slipping under the water's surface. Corporal Angelo removed his bulletproof vest and gun belt and jumped into the water to assist the driver. Corporal Angelo swam to the driver and was able to pull him to shore. Corporal Angelo kept the male in the water awaiting fire and rescue personnel, allowing the water to support the male, since any injuries and their extent were yet unknown. Officer Hazard arrived on scene, removed his bulletproof vest and gun belt, which is very important and appreciated very much, before entering the water and swimming out to the truck and to check up for other occupants. Officer Hazard was unable to open the door, so he broke out a window in order to gain entry into the truck to check for occupants. Officer Hazard located two child safety seats in the pickup, but no other occupants, fortunately. The operator of the pickup was transported to the hospital for treatment for injuries. For your actions, Officer James Hazard and Corporal Rob Angelo, it's a credit to the Ellsworth Police Department, and therefore you should be commended for your actions. Thank you both very much.
So on behalf of the City of Ellsworth, we want to present these certificates, both of them recognizing you for your road water rescue actions on July 1st, which we just heard. And I would just further add that this is what first responders do. You put the public safety first without consideration for your own safety, and that's something that moments like this, I hope that the community really recognizes the contributions that you make to the city and to your profession. So thank you for that. Thank you.
All right. Unfinished business. Item nine, update on the new Arbor Commission, original discussion, 619-23.
Which I jumped out of order, but just to reiterate, we have the information out there, looking for citizens who are interested in joining the Arbor Commission. We don't have a due date for the applications, but we're hopeful, again, currently 170 views, one application so far, and hopefully we'll get more.
I just can't find it when I look on the website. I went under City Government and then Committees. Am I looking in the wrong spot?
That's a good question.
Just want to be all.
The signup form is available through the Boards and Commissions webpage. The form requires a name, address, contact information, and a statement letter of interest, which details their relevant experience.
Okay, Boards and Commissions.
So if you click Government, the big tab?
Yes, I found it, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Item 10, review of Franklin Street parklet barricade options, the original discussion on 619-23.
I think Jared is here from DOT. If you can provide some information, I know you're here for another topic, but I think you were kind of.
We can help out with that. Will you help? Plug in my computer.
Made aware that there was going to be some questions on that.
Now, I thought they were all here for me. I'll tell you now, I was kind of deputized in the City of Pittsfield, Maine, by their Chief of Police when we were in a safety audit, and some idiot nearly ran over the Chief of Police and evaded a traffic stop, so let's just say he was not having a good day. Most exciting day I've had on the job at DOT, that's fact. So, but to your point, to the question of what can be done with the parklet and the traffic, we call them traffic calming devices in some instances, your former city engineer was correct in her interpretation of the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices in that you do need to have a sign, you do need to have reflective markings of some type to let motorists know that they are coming onto a street. But we do have a program called the Pilot Project or Demonstration Project Program, which allows us to use materials that are approved by the Federal Highway Administration. I'll probably use the word FHWA or the Feds interchangeably, I'm not talking about the FBI. We have no enforcement authority, and we don't get guns or bulletproof vests either, so just flashy ones. But it is approved, the materials that we can use, and they are materials that would be used in a novel way, in that traditionally they were not used in such a manner to direct traffic, to calm traffic, or to create a pedestrian safe barrier between the motorway and then the pedestrian way. And when I say a pedestrian safe barrier, please note, safety is a relative term. It's only really as good as the person who's hopefully complying with Title 29A, subsection 2117, the hands-free law, police don't text and drive, heads up, safety is a two-way street. But it would, in the event that a motorist were to drive over said barricades or obstacles, they would at least be alerted, and if they were going very fast, yes, they would probably have some damage to their undercarriage if they didn't have a skid plate. And what it does do is allow for greater visibility of the artwork in the park, the crosswalk that's there, and it would make for a more aesthetic, I guess, application that would be in line with the historic look, feel, and character of downtown Ellsworth. The application period for that is open, city staff have presented me an application. I have to get it approved by the region traffic engineer, the head safety engineer and traffic engineer from Maine DOT, and if all is good, and the city is willing to commit to maintaining said installation from August until about end of October, we are more than happy to loan the materials to the municipality, and as long as you install them following all safety protocols, please wear the fash, where'd the Public Works kid go when he's gone? Please wear your fancy vest, make sure that there's police support to direct traffic when it's being installed, and when the snow flies, you take it out. All we do request is that you report back data, could be anecdotal, did it work, did it not work? As good as that, and if it does prove to be successful, we can then use that to leverage further funding for permanent implementations. Does that answer the question? I know it's a lot of DOT speak, we have a lot of acronyms and our own language, yes.
What does it look like, the thing that you're talking about?
So it would look like the proposed, if it is approved, is it would be a line of collapsible delineators. These are, probably seen them, they're these white reflective poles that stick up about yea high. They're either drilled or glued, we use a type of paving glue, that's really good. Stick that to the road and just design so that if a car were to run over it, it would fall over, fall back up. If you hit it at a good clip, it's like a turkey, you're going to take out your grill. And then the other components are what's called tough curb, and these are, maybe they sit about four to six inches curb height above, and they would follow the white line so that you do have a vertical delineator between the motorway, the line delineating what is the breakdown lane, and then the shoulder slash parking area. And that, you know, it's not a bolster, it's not a permanent barricade, but it's not sowhorses with the big, you know, DOT high-vis sign. And then it would be relocating the current sign or proposing to use something that looks more historic and just having reflective paint. Like I said, all of this is per review of, you know, the region engineer and the safety engineer for DOT. We can share the application, I think, I can't connect to the internet here right now, but we have the application pretty much done, and we can just show you some examples of what that looks like.
And so, at the end of this trial period, in October, the whole thing would be removed, and then we would review anecdotal evidence or data? And if it works, then that same stuff comes back later, or a whole different?
It's really up to the town, it's your decision. We're not here to tell you what to do, you know, you know your community best. We're here to work with municipalities on improving safety for pedestrians and also promoting, you know, active transportation and ensuring that people have options when it comes to their transportation modality of choice or need. It could come back, or, you know, if you said the data showed it wasn't a worthwhile venture, we would look at either something, an alternative, or do nothing, you know, really whatever the town's interested in doing.
For the application that you were talking about, is that specific to the thing that you described, or could we say, hey, this is what we want to do, cement barriers, blah, 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 and put an application with our suggestion? Or you're saying the application is specifically for the white poles in the ridge?
The application is municipality suggestion. We are going to also see if the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, they have a professional on staff who can provide this service, you know, at no cost to the municipalities, what their recommendations also are. It's a question of can we get him to come up in time? We've got a narrow window, so just waiting on getting Jim Tassi to come to Ellsworth. I'm pastoring him, I try to get him to come as further north as possible, get him out of the Scarborough area. So you can, there are some things that might not be necessarily going to fly, such as bolsters in the DOT right-of-way. There's a lot of things that, on the surface, seem like it is a good idea because, yeah, it's an immovable barrier, but then it can present a hazard to a motorist, or it can be a barrier to visibility of a pedestrian to a motorist. So we look at, one, low-cost implementations, and, two, things that have that sort of middle ground of being improving visibility for pedestrian, but also not being a hazard to a pedestrian or a motorist at the same time. And that is, you know, a state system highway, so we do have to consider what federal highway would allow us to do.
Sounds like the cost to Ellsworth, I mean, these things are on loan from DOT, so the cost would be staffing time for applications and public works installation. Does that require council approval, or does the implementation of this, no?
Yeah, it's, we've got, we've, so I'll say it like this, we've got about $250,000 that we spent on these materials, and I'm the region four and five planner, so I cover Washington, Hancock, Piscatac, Wispenop, Scotta-Rustic, a little bit of Somerset, pretty much all of the best paths in Maine, in my opinion. And I'm trying to get as much of these implemented in the municipalities in rural Maine, because often, you know, the majority of our pedestrian hits, fatalities, and accidents do occur in rural Maine and in our smaller towns, surprisingly. You know, large cities have lighting, they have the infrastructure already in place, whereas in rural Maine, you don't necessarily have all the things that southern Maine has, and I'd like to see more of what they have as far as infrastructure and safety implementations come to northern Maine. So I'm really happy that Ellsworth is, you know, interested in pursuing this, and I make no commitments, I make no guarantees, but we're going to try our darnedest to get to the nice things.
Well, I was, Cara was going to check with the main street people to see if there were options that other towns used. Do you have something to present for that, or should we leave it at this?
I think it's best, I love, they sent images that were from Rockland and Portland, those were the two towns that got back to us that have similar situations, but make care of probably, I mean, Supreme Monas, what's other Maine?
I am merely a vessel to communicate between the department and the municipality, and we are always open to exploring the opportunities and options with the communities that we serve.
So it just sounds like the city has to sort of present something that we think would be appropriate to you guys, and then you'll approve that or not approve that?
Yep, so long as, so long as what is suggested is going to comply with the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices and the Maine State Highway Design Guidelines and all regulations, as long as it doesn't, from the safety and traffic engineers' perspective, propose a hazard to a pedestrian or a motorist, it should be good to go. But that being said, we have set materials that we have purchased to provide. If you propose something outside of those materials, we are more than happy to let you purchase them and install them and let us know how it goes.
Well, I'm only asking because there actually are cement barriers up there already, so if those are adequate.
But they're not, we, the problem with the cement barriers, if we were to move those onto the other side of the crosswalk, they become a hazard to the community, to the traffic, to the vehicles. They're vehicular hazard because of visibility issues, there's nothing reflective, so a vehicle in the fog, rain, goes to turn onto the street, not knowing that the street is closed, and they're going to drive right into a concrete planter that's going to cause significant damage to their vehicle. The barriers that they're, that we're working with the DOT are collapsible, they're plastic, they have reflective, so if a vehicle pulls in to pull onto the roadway, they're going to hit this reflective plastic barrier that's going to flop over and not cause damage to their vehicle. So that's the reason why we can't move those concrete barriers onto the road, the main street side, without.
That makes sense, but one of the pictures, and I don't know where, I don't know which town it is, has the street, the crosswalk, and then concrete barriers with signs on them, and there is no white.
It's likely not on the state system. That is a state and federal highway, so we are very limited in what we can and cannot do. Right now, the cement barriers are not in the DOT or federal highway right-of-way, so not much, you know, we're going to say. But city manager is correct in saying that they would be a hazard the second they start approaching the breakdown lane, they get into the state DOT's right-of-way, and it could propose, could be a serious hazard even at 25 miles per hour for both the pedestrian and the driver.
It's kind of, so the white posts that you're talking about are like the ones that we have now on our islands when you've got traffic coming together, right? So those aren't that bad. So is it safe to say, though, that this is the quickest thing so we can get rid of that horrible-looking barrier on Main Street, and we could get something to get us through the next couple of months, because summer's almost over, and the park will be gone? I know, it's already middle of July.
This, this, this would be the most expedient route that I can think of right now with the tools and resources that are available.
And then staff could work with something when we put the parklet back up next year, that would be. And then staff could work with, uh, something when we put the parklet back up next year, that would be different. I just would like, I'd like to get rid of those barriers as fast as I can in that nasty sign.
Like daily.
And thank you for working with us and doing this so quickly, appreciate that.
So then it sounds like you guys are just gonna do that, doesn't necessarily need to come back here?
The, yeah, cause that, that project has additional pedestrian safety components to it too. It's not just the parklet, there's other sections in town, crosswalks that are gonna receive uh, some tough, what's it, tough?
Tough curb.
Curb, and there's some reflective stickers for the crosswalks. So there's, there's a whole bunch of other, so when and if it is approved, it will come back to the council for a complete description of the work that's going to be done.
Yeah, so this application that you're talking about isn't just for that one thing?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe there was two other locations also brought forth by municipal staff. And after the Traffic Safety Committee looked at the draft application, recommended that one by the library not be considered due to the loss of parking spaces during, you know, peak season. But the Franklin and I think Franklin and Union stir Water Street. There was one that's a pretty quick slip turn off of State Route 3230 that is still gonna be considered. And then the parklet, um, which it's, it's really a simple install. And honestly, if city forgets and a plow truck plows over it, no one's gonna really shake a finger. We're just, you know, darn pleased at DOT that municipalities are looking at safety seriously and willing to uh, try out some new ideas with us so that we can develop longer and lasting, permanent um, changes to the transportation system to benefit all users.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Moving on, consent agenda, there are no items, so we'll move right into new business. Item 11, presentation from DOT's Village Partnership Program. This presentation is on Maine DOT's Village Partnership Initiative. This program leverages funding through BIL to make overdue investments in the historic downtowns and village centers in rural Maine. The process requires feasibility, feasibility study in a partnership with the municipality in Maine DOT. Then using that feasibility and design study, we apply for a USDOT RACE grant to bring for every $1 local match, $1 state and $8 federal. This program addresses pedestrian, bicycle and motor safety, overdue ADA compliance and the aesthetics of our historic downtown. It is a once-in-a-generation opportunity.
Take it away.
And that's selling an agenda.
Hello, uh, once again, I'm Jared Gillette, I'm with the Department of Transportation. I'm the region four and five planner and tribal liaison. And I'm here today to talk about community-based initiatives, Village Partnership Initiative with Maine Department of Transportation. Uh, in this presentation, we're really what it is, it's transportation infrastructure for the next generation. You know, a little personal note, some of you know me, I'm from Callis, Maine, grew up in Down East Maine and been a transportation planner now for about 15 years. And, you know, all my life, I never thought we'd be able to get the nice things in rural Maine, but this is our opportunity to get it and to um, make these investments in the infrastructure that, you know, Callis, the last time they put in sidewalks was when I was born in 1983. Presque, it was, you know, 1990, I'm sure Ellsworth city sidewalks um, and many of the transportation infrastructure last had a major rehab probably a generation ago. Uh, and that's where this is an exciting time to be a municipality in regions four and five and to be honestly in my position. So the outline, I'm just gonna talk about the general philosophy, go over some DOT speak and acronyms. I'm gonna talk about the Planning Partnership Initiative. We've actually now changed the name of this, uh, sorry, we're designing the car while the wheels are spinning. It's the Village Partnership Initiative Plan Phase. Uh, and then we'll go right into the VPI. I can probably skip the MPI and the BPI, those are really geared towards um, you know, Public Works Directors and, you know, businesses that wanna engage with DOT. So our philosophy, this is really something new in DOT, especially in Maine DOT, where we would like to make investments in the infrastructure while at the same time doing urban design and placemaking, really investing in that look, feel, character, quality of rural scenic New England towns. Um, to quote our commissioner, you know, we want you to get from A to B as safely and efficiently uh, as possible, obeying the traffic posted speed limits, please, not texting and driving. Um, but when you get there, we want you to have a reason to get out, stop, um, and spend some money in that town. This is a way to also address pedestrian safety um, and then, you know, ADA compliance, which many of our municipalities in the state of Maine, you know, when we did an ADA assessment around 2014 to 2018, so many of our um, crossings and, you know, safety was, we're, we were years away from being where we could be and should be. And this is a chance for us to, to do that. Uh, and one thing or two I'll say, you know, ADA is not just, you know, designing for alternative labor persons, it's designed for all. Um, and, you know, I hope that someday I can be 80, 90, 100 years old and have a safe, efficient and comfortable transportation system to, to get around on. So our speak, I'm sorry, we've got a lot of acronyms, a lot of three-letter acronyms and a lot of our own internal language. I'm really just gonna talk today about, if I say PPI and VPI, they're really interchangeable, it's all one process now. So the PPI is part of the Village Partnership Initiative. It's just the initial phase that we have to use to go after the, the larger federal funding. So really with this, the Planning Partnership Initiative, and I need to update this, the Village Partnership Initiative Planning Phase, this is a locally initiated project. Your municipality is the requester, is the driver. DOT will provide match um, and technical assistance in this. And the type of projects, this can be economic development, active transportation. We do, out of many of these have very high-level renderings, like architectural drawings in 3D to then use to be like the money shot to convince the feds to say, this is why you're going to invest in this community. It also will bring along cost estimating uh, and provide a matrix of alternatives for different transportation scenarios. So what that means is, you know, there's the do-nothing option, there's the put a sidewalk only here, rehab, you know, a range of different choices um, to consider. The funding that DOT will match is capped at $75,000. So what that means is the largest project that, you know, is funded is around $150,000. If it goes over and the municipality wants to, you can always put in more money. But our, our budget is capped at 75,000. Other municipalities have, you know, said, don't worry, we don't care, we'll put in 100,000. Um, it comes down to the scope, um, the budget estimate that we have and that comes later in the process. And it is based upon a three-tiered approach in municipal valuation. So Ellsworth is in the 50/50 in the match structure, so DOT would contribute 50% of the cost and then we ask that the municipality contribute the other 50%. And in this, it's a planning study, we work with a consultant. These are pre-qualified firms, they're multidisciplinary, they usually have uh, traffic engineers, transportation engineers, landscape architects, urban planners, architects and a whole range of professionals that can do the job and do the job correctly. We've got about 13 firms on our prequal list, they're all good. Whichever firm is selected, I have full confidence in any one of them to do the job. And, you know, what DOT's role is, is we provide data, technical assistance and help guide and I'd be the project manager for said project if it does occur. Municipality provides um, members from, you know, the municipal staff to be on a steering committee. Usually it's a police chief, actually, a fire chief, somebody from public works, uh, city planner. And then if there's a member of the public at large or a city councillor that's interested. You know, it's a team, maybe about five or six people at max. And it's a quick process in the fact that this planning phase is done in a year and it's not monthly meetings. We rely heavily on the consultant and we really get our money's worth out of them. There's usually two to three public meetings in the beginning, a final public meeting, maybe quarterly check-ins. I will say, I do not recommend ever going for monthly meetings with the consultants. I've got about 13 of these projects going on right now and I have five more coming online. There's one of me, half the state of Maine, it's just too much to keep track of. And we don't need to, these consultants are all professionals, they're very good at what they do. Uh, I've never had a consultant come up with something so, you know, off-base or out of line that I've had to say, uh-uh, no. It's, they know what they're doing, they know what DOT expects, they get to know the municipality, what the municipality needs and the recommendations that they come up with are very good. And so what this does is this allows us to go after the large transformative Village Partnership Initiatives. And these are projects, the minimum is 5 million, the max is 35 million. Uh, we do like to focus on, you know, downtown villages. We do not tell you what your village is, that's for the municipality to decide. You tell us where your village starts and ends. What you define as a village, all we ask is you have a post office, maybe a library, some type of municipal function. Anything that says village, the City Village of Monson, they're doing a Village Partnership Initiative and they've got like an art gallery and a post office. But that's great, cause that's their village, they've defined what it is. You know, they're not doing a $35 million project, but they are, for the size of that municipality, making um, a very significant investment in their system. Uh, our spot VPIs, these have a max cost of 500,000. This is when we focus just on a specific intersection or pedestrian crossing um, or if you wanna put up gateway signage or some type of traffic calming and implementation device, whether it's like a pedestrian island somewhere. Those, there is not the same uh, application process of having to go through, you know, the regional planner and then all of this. It's, if the town has an idea, you can contact the region engineer, they'll work with me and if you've got the money, you know, it's, it's such a small dollar amount, we can just put it in the work plan. The large transformative, why we do go through such a long and lengthy process is we are using, we're making significant for Maine investments using federal, state and local dollars. We don't want to have a process that doesn't have to, you know, engagement with the public, hasn't been based on data. And then also, we wanna make sure that we're not going to have uh, commit, like, make some of the mistakes that we have in the past. We wanna have something that is going to be a one-and-done, be effective. Uh, but at the same time, be an economic driver for the municipality. This is part of Maine DOT using what we do to reinvest in communities, be a part of economic revitalization. Uh, examples, you know, downtown Hollowell in 2007 had a 100% vacancy in their retail businesses. Now they're at 100% occupancy, it's a very bumping town. Downtown Belgrade did this process. People always compliment how going through downtown Belgrade is much more enjoyable and how businesses turned around. Sanford has engaged in this and they were recently awarded a RACE grant of the max 35 million. Um, and the same reason too, why this is, you know, such a, I think, an important thing in rural Maine. You know, I was in Pittsfield on the safety audit, they're doing uh, the same process. And I was with, you know, the chief of police and a car literally came around a slip turn. And I've been doing this long enough, I stand next to the building, new chief of police was on the corner, he nearly got clipped. The kid came back and was standing at the stoplight and was texting on his phone and the chief said, hey, you need to get out of that car. Kid sped up, he evaded arrest, pretty brazen. This helps law enforcement also with not having to respond so much to speeding um, and a lot of the traffic enforcement issues when there's so many other pressing things, I think, facing law enforcement right now. So it solves a lot of problems, it improves safety, it improves aesthetics and it helps with the economy of municipalities. And so that I'm not taking up too much time, I'm just gonna stop it there, leave it open for questions. These are some examples, you know, here's downtown Hollowell. Gardner is not a VPI, but they followed a similar process to it before we had such a program at DOT. Same thing, a lot of economic activity, this would be an example of a spot VPI. And I'm just gonna skip ahead, I'm, you know, if anybody wants to reach out to me about the municipal planning initiative or the business partnership initiative, please feel free to reach out. That was me on day one at job, this is me on day, I can't even remember anymore. During the NHL season, my hair gets down to like this, but uh, my team lost, so cut my hair that my wife's forcing. Feel free to reach out and I'm here to answer any questions.
Do we have any idea of, I mean, is there a project that we're working towards? Is that why we're?
I, I do have a scope.
I'm gonna assume that there was a reason that we had this presentation.
And here it comes.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let y'all do your thing and I'll go sit over there, these, these folks are pros.
You need your map.
Oh, you need my map?
Yeah, there you go, thank you. Hi, Shannon Richards, Economic Development Director. You don't wanna introduce yourself?
Matt Williams, city planner.
Okay, um, so we have an internal committee that was put together in 2018-ish under then city planner Michelle Gagnon, but it's called the Traffic Safety Committee, but we talk about traffic, we talk about safety, we talk about the roads. We talk about a lot of stuff, economic development related, planning related. Committee members are Glenn Moser, who's um, city manager and police chief, Matt Williams, city planner, myself, the assistant planner, uh, public works director, um, Jason Engels, who's our traffic light extraordinaire, if you don't know that. Um, and then, um, uh, we wrote here Maine DOT Region Four Traffic Engineer because right now there's a placeholder. It was Bruce Matson, many of you probably know that name from um, a few years ago now. Uh, with Alan Farrington up until just a few months ago. And now we are Region Traffic Four, I think you've got somebody.
Starting July 24th.
Okay.
We'll have a region engineer and traffic engineer.
Okay.
We'll be back to full staff.
Perfect, so they also have a place on this committee. So we started talking about the Village Partnership Initiative that Jared just gave a wonderful presentation on back in February. Um, and at that time, we had a, the largest scale map that our plotter could give us of the city. And we started doing what Jared said, delineating what is our village. And we did that by um, looking at what are our problem areas. So it was kind of ironic that, I wanna say it was about the same month that we were doing this, there was the gentleman that came up during public comment talking about the lower light. So obviously, if we listen to a lot of public comment, if we listen to a lot of the, um, you know, the issues with uh, high crash locations and pedestrian issues, we're able to circle those on a map. From an economic development perspective, we look at aesthetics and we're able to circle those on a map. So um, if you wanna look at a copy of the map that we put together as um, uh, in delineating what our scope area would be and what the projects would be within that area, it's in the planning office, they have a copy of it. But then we had to like come back down to earth because a lot of the things that we started proposing might not be funded through the VPI program. We weren't sure what roads, so could you have local feeder roads such as like Franklin Street that then feeds into a um, a Route One or a Route Three, could those be um, looked at? So we had, you know, lots of questions. So this was great to have a relationship with um, the regional traffic engineer as well as with Jared. So after meeting with Jared, I don't know how many times Jared, like four or five?
Three, five.
Four or five times, um, we've narrowed it down to a scope of area that seems reasonable for the city as well as for the DOT. Um, and the types of projects that we're looking at within that area would be related to drainage, sidewalks, road resurfacing, wayfinding signage, streetscaping, including lighting, ADA compliance and bike ped safety and mobility. So those aren't just spot projects, as Jared talked about, that's like a $500,000 cap. This would land us somewhere in the transformative category, just because of the scale and then the associated costs. But like Jared said, we have to start somewhere and that somewhere is with a planet, a plan. So it's no longer the PPI, it's the VPI, but the planning phase of, of the VPI. So, it's no longer the PPI, it's the VPI, but the planning phase of, of the VPI. So, I believe it's a fifty percent match by the city. In anticipation of that, do you want to talk about the CRP?
Sure.
Okay.
So, we estimate that about plan to scope out the work that could be done through a consultant would be about a hundred thousand dollars. So, the match from the city would be a fifty thousand dollar match, and DOT would take care of the other fifty thousand dollars. So, previously, the council had approved, moved forward with the Community Resiliency Partnership, and Dover Foxcroft had used the same method to fund their VPI project planning phase. They used that grant, so we just kind of modeled our approach after what Dover Foxcroft had done successfully, and requested the fifty thousand dollars for the match for this plan if we were to move forward with it. It's based on, you know, what the Community Resiliency Partnership was based on, which is like carbon emission offsetting, encouraging active transportation by reducing traffic mileage. But those have a lot of common sense benefits, too, again, like traffic safety, lowering the traffic amount for our major routeways, including High Street and Water Street, which are on this map. Yeah, so that's the approach we decide, or we're taking for the match.
Just to be clear, we're not asking to allocate the matching funds as of yet. We'll come back before the council for that, but that's going to be contingent on if we get the grant or not. Because if we don't, then we'll go back to square one and try to figure out how we can match this. I just want to point out the elephant in the room. Oak Street is not included in the scope area, because there is a project that's been designated through the DOT to work on Oak Street, so we didn't want to duplicate efforts. So, if Mark Blanchett is watching, that is why Oak Street is not included.
Wait, this just in.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's it.
I might just point out how the demo projects that we submitted to DOT and worked with Jared to come up with tie into this. So, those are supposed to show DOT that, again, like, this is an area that needs to help the demo project showcase with the data, whether anecdotal or actual, shows that there's a need and that these will fix the problems that Ellsworth isn't experiencing. So, a number of our projects are based off of Water Street with the idea that pedestrian access to the harbor was important, and making some of those crosswalks safe along that route. Yeah, so that's how that ties into this, to showcase that Ellsworth is capable and ready for the larger VPI grant, not just the demonstration projects.
Just a question about Oak Street. Since it is being worked on, I know it's Mark.
I don't, I'm not trying not to laugh.
Yes, it is. Is, is there possible in terms of the work and the ideas that are coming up for the other areas to filter that to the DOT so that the work that's done on Oak Street is in line with addressing, you know, consistent with whatever is being done with, through this grant? As opposed to it just being done and then not being consistent? There may be things that...
Right, so, like, as an example, if we were to do wayfinding signage that started, and, you know, you would obviously want to incorporate Oak Street into part of that. We wouldn't want to leave it out on purpose, just because it's part of another project. So, I think the answer is yes.
The reason why Oak Street is not included in the scope is if I put that in the scope and let the municipality does choose to pursue this, it would put the brakes on that. Right now, white wave is, you know, already out there surveying people. This is a funded project in our work plan, it has a win number that's active. I don't want to throw this one out, put the brakes on it, to go after, right now, it's a hypothetical idea. So, if we did that, it would put the brakes on, very good project that needs to go through. But in the scope of services, for this project, anything the consultant does is to reference the win number. I think it's like twenty-six, three-hundred dot zero-zero, I'm not quite sure off the top of my head. It's to reference the Oak Street work identification number with DOT, all work that the DOT and other consultants for that project do, as well as all the, I believe I put in there's the multimodal trail and the continuation or further development and planning studies for that. And that's what this program is about. It's about looking at, you know, all of the pieces that are up in the air and providing a coalesced document and path forward to have, you know, transportation infrastructure in rural Maine has been sort of, you know, a patchwork quilt. You know, it's great for a movie, and quilting doesn't really work so well for an efficient transportation system. We'd like to have, you know, something that is uniform in both material functionality and the aesthetics as well, so that we've got a very efficient and safe system that, you know, brings us into the modern era for the rest of, you know, the next hundred years is ideally what we'd like to get out of it. I hope to never have to come back to Ellsworth to give this pitch again. Not that I don't like coming to Ellsworth. I will say, you know, if the municipality does go down this route, we are going to ask to see some skin in the game from the municipality. You know, you can use the Community Resilience Fund for some of the match, but, you know, it's... The reason why we go through the Village Partnership Initiative is, you know, in New England, we have got some of the highest number of highway miles, but we are a state that's definitely in the have-not category. And so, we do really rely on, you know, partnerships, working together, and then working with the feds for us to be able to accomplish these types of projects. And, you know, we just can't, if I could come to every town and be the Oprah of sidewalks, and you get a sidewalk, I'd love it. But, you know, we just can't, and we can only work with municipalities that, you know, show us that they're vested and interested in making these changes. So, you know, we are going to ask for some municipal match throughout the process. You know, when it comes down to, if, you know, we do get a federal RACE grant, we're going to ask for that dollar, you know, to the eight that the state brings, or the eight that the feds bring and the other dollar that the state brings, just so that we can be sure that we're being fair. And I think, you know, my regions, you know, we're some of the more... It's not as easy for municipalities in Regions Four and Five to just leverage that type of funding that say Sanford or Wyndham, Portland, Maine can. But I think we can still do something. Callis is going through this process, Presque Isle, Caribou, Madawaska, Millinocket, Pittsfield. You know, we've got a lot of interest in Regions Four and Five, and I think the wins are in our favor to... This is sort of our opportunity to actually do this stuff, so that's all I really got. Any other questions? Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't have one question.
Sure.
Jana, you were saying, just the dollar amount was confusing to me. So, you were saying a hundred thousand, fifty thousand from us, and I just didn't understand what that amount was. That wasn't the amount for the whole grant that we're applying.
So, for the planning component, which would be Phase One, not the construction or the engineering, that would be another phase, which is a higher dollar figure. But with the planning phase, they're estimated at a hundred thousand. And if it's a fifty-fifty match between the DOT and the city, it would be fifty thousand from us, fifty thousand from them. We've applied for a grant for fifty thousand, as Jared said. We could use probably about thirty thousand from that, so potential for, you know, looking for, to fill in the other twenty thousand dollars in funds.
Okay, I understand, that's for the planning phase, so that we can apply for the grant.
Absolutely, yeah.
I was like, couldn't figure out how we could get all that done for...
No, absolutely not. It would be a miracle, but, you know.
Eventually, we'll need to contribute one to eight, eight being a minimum of five million. So, we're looking at around a half million or so eventually having to, I don't have a tally there on me.
Potentially, yeah.
And Jerry, correct me, I don't know if that entire ten percent has to be straight from the municipality. We might be able to use grants to add to that ten percent.
At that point, it goes to people who make way more money than I do, who are higher up in the building. I don't, I'm on floor two, I don't take the elevator anywhere, I'm walking right from the parking lot. But, our commissioner is very committed to making sure that rural Maine can get from A to B. We want you to be successful. We have people at DOT who will work with municipal staff and one of the officials to find a way to make it possible. You know, we're not here to be a barrier, we're here to find ways with you, because we want to see the investment in the state system and the investment in your municipal system. So, like I said, I make no commitments, but I'm always open to exploring opportunities and avenues with the people that I serve. So, if you have a vision, we're going to work pretty hard to find a way to make sure that you can get to it. And there's eighteen hundred of me at DOT, so, not planners, but other people in various different professions are really dedicated to seeing what's best for Ellsworth to come to prove.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item twelve, discussion in action on the request of the Partners of the Union River Porch to install education information displays at the harbor, sponsored by Council Bureau.
Actually, Mark Rumick is here to talk about this.
Hi, I'm Mark Rumick, I wear two hats, Harbor Commission and Porch. If you have a boat, you're poor. The good news is, we're not asking for seven and a half million dollars. We're really not asking for any money. All we need is your blessing to put some information, educational panels down in the harbor. At the moment, we're talking about doing eight of them. That number may change, and if you look at the letter, I didn't specify a particular size, because the content that we're going to put together will dictate the size that we need. So, that's what we're doing. We're talking about the wildlife that's down there, whether it's in the wet, in the water, on the hard, which is landside, or in the air, the progression of the harbor for the last two-hundred-and-twenty-eight years, whatever, I think it's two-hundred-and-twenty-eight. Some of the history, some of the people that have participated in the growth and usages of the harbor. And now, what we're going to do is bring all those information pieces together. For example, history of the harbor. How many of you know that PT boats were made in Ellsworth, Maine during the Second World War? That was done here. How many people know how many ships participated in the American Revolution that were launched right down here? Part of our history. That's what we're trying to bring back to life. Give people an opportunity to learn a little bit, maybe get their, whet their appetite a little bit about who we are, where we came from, and what we're all about going forward. So, what we're asking for is your blessings, no money.
I just have one question. I was at a similar sort of thing in upstate New York when I was driving back to where I grew up. And it had, I forget even where it was exactly, but there was a lot of educational signage. But it didn't include anything about the history before white people and native people who lived here before us? And it just seemed kind of glaring that that wasn't on there at all? Would you guys include that?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have to, that's how we're here.
Then I'm in favor of it.
Is this being done in collaboration with Historical Society of Restorative Preservation?
We're pulling information, once we have your blessing, then we will start pulling in more formal relationships to make sure we have the content right and we cover everything we need to cover.
I think it's a great idea. I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion.
I do have a question. Ownership of these going forward, so maintenance when they're vandalized or broken?
We'd have to work that out, I don't have an answer right now. The idea is, we're using the same design as MDOT and the Park Service, so there is some precedent of how to take care of these things. As far as the relationship goes between the signs and the city, once they're in the park, they really belong to the city. To work out a maintenance agreement, that's something we'd have to do.
Does someone have a comment?
Cara did.
Just a, just a quick question. My name is Cara Romano, I'm the Director of Heart of Ellsworth. I'm just wondering how these signs would sort of differ from, or if they could sort of be the same format as Museum of the Streets? So, there's sort of contiguous signage that has the same aesthetic throughout the city, tying everything in together. We're spending so much time, energy, and effort on reports and on studies and all these things, and just trying to consider having everything look the same. So, there's a tie-in from Harbor Park down to the River Walk, all the way up to Nolton Park. And not only that, there's a ton of information and a ton of sort of systems that were created throughout that for exactly what you're talking about, like, dealing with the long-term care and how things would already be put in. I mean, Public Works already has experience putting those in, and they all sort of tie neatly back to what I think the Historic Preservation Commission and the Historical Society was calling the motherboard, which is up in Nolton Park, so I'll just...
I think that's a good point in terms of, and maybe one of the things, if this is approved, would you be willing to come back before the final design to work with, with the city around that?
Of course.
He wasn't asking for any money, though, those signs cost a lot of money.
Yeah, the reason we're going with that particular design is because there's a track record of it being viable. They last a long time. Some of the signs up on Cadillac, I think, have been up there since I was a kid.
They also need to be low enough that they're not going to block any view. It's that, you know, people like to sit in their vehicles and, you know, and watch the animals, and, yeah, I mean, and watch the boats and things. So, you don't want to, you're not going to have stand-up.
No, you also need them large enough that they can actually cover the content that we're trying to bring in.
Showing the maps and, you know.
Yeah, examples of the wildlife and...
Right.
It should be possible to use those rugged sign styles and match existing city branding. I don't see that being an issue.
We can certainly address it. As it is now, we designed, we came up with the idea, very specific, that, you know, if we need to look at some options, sure.
I'm, I'm sorry. So, but they could look like what Heart of Ellsworth has, the museum, they just wouldn't be the stand-up signs. It could have that same kind of decorative feel to it.
Yeah, the podium style is really what we're doing, with the granite posts.
Right, but they could have that decorative feel, so it matches everything that's downtown, but just not the stand-up little museum.
Yeah, the stand-up, for your point exactly, Michelle, it doesn't work.
All right, we have a motion, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Mark.
And it was free. Not gonna be.
If we didn't do anything in the city, because it was going to cost us money to maintain, we wouldn't be doing anything.
Item thirteen. Public hearing in action on the following business license applications. Madam Clerk, is everything in order with these?
It is.
And these are all renewals?
Correct.
Great, so we'll take them one by one. Ellsworth Lodge of Elks, number two-seven-four-three-three-seventeen, High Street, for renewal of a city class B license, fictional liquor and amusement, and renewal of a state club, on-premise with catering malt, spiritus, and vinos, class one liquor license. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open, if anybody would like to speak on this, they may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, the public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Taste Jamaica LLC, one-ninety State Street, for renewal of a city class license, fictional liquor and renewal of a state restaurant, class three and four wine and malt liquor license. It's a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing, the public hearing is open. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, the public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Melanie Almert Fox, DBA Helen's Restaurant of Ellsworth, fifty-five Down East Highway, for renewal of a city class C license, fictional liquor and renewal of a state restaurant, malt, spiritus, and vinos, class one, two, three, four liquor license. This is a public hearing, open the public hearing, the public hearing is open. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, the public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Daniel C. Potts, DBA Lakeside Cedar Cabins, three-ninety-seven Mariahville Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. This is a public hearing, open the public hearing, the public hearing is open. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, the public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Debutler did it, DBA... Debutler did it, DBA Dragonfire Pizza, two forty-eight State Street for renewal of a city, class B arcade, fictional liquor, and state malt liquor license. This is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Tats Pizza, Ellsworth, three ninety-six High Street for renewal of a city class C license, fictional liquor, and renewal of a state malt, wine, and spiritus liquor license. It's a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Would anybody like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item fourteen, council order number zero seven two three zero zero, public hearing in action on the request of the Finance Director to award a tax anticipation note known as a tan borrowing for two million dollars.
All right, you should have a handout from me of the three banks that bid on this. My recommendation is F and B because of all the stuff going on with our accounting. And I just, I don't think for five hundred dollars it's worth moving that much money out of the current bank and somewhere else for now.
I can see people are looking, so give everybody a chance.
The three items from the bank were sent separate from your packet.
That's right. I was like, I saw them somewhere. They're in a different email.
I can afford if you've lost them.
For some reason, I just lost them. Yeah, for some reason, it just might, it's like, won't reach.
While they're looking, so with the tan, how much are we, are we using the full amount? Do we anticipate using?
I have to draw down the minimum. I'm going to try not to use it, frankly. I have some things to settle early on, so we'll see. But I'm trying not to use it, as you know and probably can see. Interest rates are on the run, so I'd rather not borrow. If I can avoid it, we keep it more as a safety measure.
So we only, we only pay interest on what is drawn on and as we pay it back?
Exactly.
Is there a minimum requirement? Fifty thousand, right?
Fifty thousand, yeah.
Is that a one-time draw or do you have to maintain it for fifty thousand?
No, you just have to take down fifty thousand when you take the note. And you can pay it back whenever you want, so.
So this interest is based on the entire two hundred thousand? If we were to borrow it for eleven months?
Right. And hold it for the entire term.
Fifty thousand, it's going to be significant.
Yeah. So. Like I said, I'm trying not to use it.
Two million, yeah, not two hundred thousand.
I'm cheap like that. I don't want to use it. I'd rather not spend money if I can help it.
The five point oh nine is less interest than the five point oh five?
It's just the way that it's calculated. They're doing it on a three sixty-five, three sixty-five. It works out to a five hundred dollar difference. Jim went over it. Just math.
There's also a requirement to put in half a million dollars into Murchie Savings Bank. We'd have to move half a million.
No, I, I don't mind that. So one's doing three sixty-five, one's doing three sixty, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. And my, obviously, we'd have a discussion if I thought we needed to take down any more money, but my goal is not to.
Further questions? Is there a motion?
Is it a public hearing?
Yes. Oh, yes. Thank you. This is a public. So I will open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If anybody would like to speak on this.
Could I see a copy of the resolution that you have or you're working on? I have one that I got today.
A copy of this?
The suggested motion, right?
Or the order, the council order?
I'm Raymond Williams. I'm with the fifty-sixth Antcar Street. The reason I would like to see what the actual thing is, I got from the city clerk's office. A copy that was on the materials which were provided, which I'm assuming were provided to you and were on the computer, on the city internet. And I think unless I'm missing something, which maybe I am. I don't think that the first paragraph in the proposed resolution, it has two errors. And in the third paragraph, I think you have, the reference is to tax anticipation note being for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-three, and that appears three times in the copy that I got. Now, maybe it's been corrected and was given to you, but I don't think that is the correct year that should be in it. I think it should be two thousand twenty-four.
That's correct.
You saw that too.
Yeah, I corrected the one that came from Jim, but it must have. I don't think when I forwarded it to Tony that I gave her my copy of it. I just forwarded Jim's and then I caught it later, so it's my fault.
And, and I just have another comment. I believe your, your intention is not to draw it all down?
No.
Okay, all right. Well, that's what I was thinking.
I'd rather not, not at that interest.
And how much was borrowed last year?
Same amount, same amount.
Same amount.
There was a million drawn down.
A million drawn down. And this provides, okay, this provides, okay, I just.
Thank you.
I noticed that while I was wondering, so the date should be changed, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, that came straight from Bon Council. I didn't change it till later when I caught it.
Sorry. Whoever makes the motion, Tammy, will change it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Will we have the public hearing? Give me a close.
Oh, I didn't close it yet, no. I was just going to wait. We have nothing but time. Would anybody else like to speak? All right, seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed.
Like to make a motion? Move toward the tax anticipation note, low bid to First National Bank at an interest rate of five point zero five percent.
You have a motion?
Second.
A second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item fifteen, council order number zero seven two three zero one, request of the Water Superintendent to purchase two variable frequency drives for forty-five thousand fifty dollars.
Good afternoon. Reggie Winslow, Water Department Superintendent. So I am asking for two VFDs, for, one for each of our raw water pumps. Currently, the raw water pumps start and they run full speed and then stop after a certain period of time. The VFDs will allow us to lower the pump speed, creating less water hammer throughout the system, pressure spikes. Which, and then also the, relieving the constant starting and stopping will also be a lot easier on our other equipment. Our UV units and other relays and electronics and, and our chemical feed system. These can all be installed by our normal guy that we use for SCADA. He's given us the quote for it and should be a pretty easy install, relatively quick.
Is this a budgeted item?
Yes, this was approved through the budget process.
And you need the forty-five because it says if five percent input line reactors are incorporated, please add seventy-two fifty and you're going to.
So I, I just totaled that up just in case and then I didn't have to come back and.
Okay, so that's a maximum. It might be less than that if you.
Right.
That's all hell.
Is this something that every user will benefit from or just a few?
The entire treatment plant itself would be the, pretty much the only beneficial person from it.
But it will enhance. So what these, what these variable pumps do is they, frequency, is they'll enable the pumps instead of just turning on and running full blast. They'll, which is hard on the pumps, which we just replaced one with a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yes.
These will allow them to gradually get up to speed and then when they're done, they'll also allow them to gradually slow down, which will prolong the life of the pumps. It enables the rest of the system to work more efficiently because there's not this huge flux of water all of a sudden. So it's going to prolong the life of the entire treatment system. And then it's going to prevent, hopefully, some water hammering, which is when all of a sudden there's a shut-off in the water where, and what that, that sends vibration, if you will, through the system, which will cause ruptures in the, in the water mains. So, so it's a type of thing that will help the entire system, which all the users will benefit from.
Yeah, think of it as your garden hose. If you have it on full blast and then you just let go and stop the water, how that jumps. I mean, that's a eighty-year-old system.
They tend to be more energy efficient as well, VFDs?
They should be much more energy efficient.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. We probably need to tell our amount, though, in there, right?
Move to approve the request of the public, of the Water Department Superintendent, high lift pump VFD upgrades with a cost of up to forty-five thousand and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item sixteen, council order number zero seven two three zero two, request of the Finance Director to approve the annual reports for tax year April first, two thousand twenty-two through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three for affordable housing tax increment financing districts Leonard Lake, Oriole Way, and Oriole Way Senior Housing in the city of Ellsworth.
City manager. Sorry, my girl that does TIPS went home sick today.
You have those reports there. We have to do them every year and we're just reporting to the state that there's no change in those, in those TIP districts.
Should we spend some time talking about what TIPS are?
No, no.
I'll just jump in with an emotion so that we don't have to talk about TIPS. Move to approve the annual reports for the tax year April one, twenty-two through March thirty-one, twenty-three for affordable housing tax increment financing districts Leonard Lake, Oriole Way, and Oriole Way Senior in the city of Ellsworth.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item seventeen, council order number zero seven two three zero three, request of the IT Director to purchase IT network upgrades. Intend? That's how everybody should intro when they have an agenda.
Good evening. IT Director, Jason Ingles, here to seek your approval to purchase significant upgrades for our IT systems. I went into fair, fair bit of depth in the memo. I'll kind of do Cliff Notes here and happily take questions if you have any. So this is part of a five-year replacement cycle that we have for our infrastructure. We purchased the servers that we have now in two thousand eighteen, so we're at the five-year cycle. Part of that, that goes along with that is the network firewalls, our switchgear, and our backup storage. So part of this project encompasses all of that, plus the software that ties it all together. So we have done quite a bit of research. We're, we're looking to stick with the same companies that we're using now. We've had great luck with the hardware. I've had no failures of significance. So we've, we built a, built some systems and we solicited quotes from four of the top resellers. And we got two back that met our requirements. And the low bidder for both the hardware and software portion was GovConnection. We're also looking to lease the hardware portion. Requested lease quotes from the two, or from all the vendors that submitted our proposal. But I also solicited a quote from Gorham Savings Bank, who we've used before with great luck, and they were the low, for best, best proposal for a lease of the three. So I would like to move forward with the proposal or the quote from GovConnection and the lease proposal from Gorham Savings. And that is a municipal lease. They would have a one-dollar buyout at the end. So at the end, we'll own it for a dollar. So it's more like financing than a lease, really, but.
At the end of, what, what is the term of the lease?
Five years. It's a five-year lease. And the lease payments would be ninety thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and thirty-six cents for each of those five years. And the software will be paid for as a one-time payment from ARPA funds under the cybersecurity justification.
And that was budgeted at the time of the ARPA funds?
Yes, it's one of, it's one of the ones that was included in that.
And then the, the lease payment is in the capital or in the?
So lease right now is coming out of capital. The future years won't be done that way here.
So we budgeted that much money?
Yes, I have the money in capital here.
Okay.
I have the specific accounts if you want me to list them.
So the lease, you're actually leasing slash, you're leasing a server. Is it a dedicated server?
Yeah, so it's, it's an on-premise, it's actually three server clusters, a production, disaster recovery, and one for the VDI, which is the virtual desktops. We're leasing that, we're leasing the heart of the firewalls and the backup storage. So the three hardware components of this, we'd be leasing.
And did, did you look into, this is sort of cloud environment, but, uh, cloud vendors where you would move everything into the cloud and have all that redundancy?
There are certain workloads that we have that can't go in the cloud, particularly public safety with police. And we also have some, some older programs that need server storage that can't work in a cloud environment. It's not, it's that kind of outdated to work in that kind of a way. So we, we saw a certain number of things that we, we can't go fully cloud. And that said, the stuff that we have on prem, on premise, we're, we are backing up to the cloud. So it is backed up in a, you know, remote location. So we, we get cloud benefits but have the local storage and local servers. So.
The term comes up in five years when we'll cycle equipment again?
Yes, so it's a kind of a five-year replacement cycle. In, with the server hardware, typically after three to four years is when we start seeing failures of hard drives, memory modules, power supplies. And we've already started to see that on the equipment we have now. We've had two memory modules fail. Somehow we haven't lost any hard drives yet. But that's typically when we start seeing those failures. And it's also when we start seeing the manufacturers and support for the older hardware. So after five years is when you, your best bet is to start looking for new hardware, just to maintain that vendor support if nothing else.
There's probably not much resale value in that equipment, though?
No, in a five-year-old server, not really, no.
Two questions. What did the city pay for it five years ago?
So we, it was, it was around a hundred and seventy-five thousand. But we're doing more this time around. For this time, this proposal includes, that's slightly misleading because we underspec that server cluster in two thousand eighteen and we actually added two nodes to those clusters in twenty or twenty-one at thirty-five. So it was about two hundred and, probably about two hundred and ten all in, if we'd have done it all at once. So it was about 200, probably about 210 all in, if we'd have done it all at once. But this time around, we're doing the VDI, which is the virtual desktops. What that will allow us to do is have desktop computers. It'll, it'll allow us to extend the life of our desktop computers because the computing is actually happening in the server room and not at the desktop. Also means our data is in the server room and not on a laptop or a desktop, so it's more secure and it's more efficient. The other, the other side of that is when we do need to replace a desktop because it's obsolete or fails, we can replace that with a much simpler piece of hardware called like, old, old time would be like a dumb terminal. It's just a basic computer that gives you access to your computer in the server room. So it's cheaper hardware, it's more energy efficient, just long-term. It's kind of the way the industry's moving, you know, in organizations of this size. The other thing is if we ever did have ransomware attack or something like that, the recovery in a virtual environment would be a lot easier than it would be the way we have it now with physical computers. So there's several benefits of that.
Also, Jason, I recall from our conversation that it also enables employees to be able to access remote much more efficiently. So currently, we have to go through a VPN and it makes the system really clunky and slow and almost impossible to use remote. This will allow us to do it much more efficiently.
Remote access using this system will be almost exactly the same as being here. And, and when you say remote, that doesn't necessarily mean somewhere else. It could be, I'm a city hall worker who needs to spend a day at the wastewater plant. I can take my laptop, sit down, get on it, and I'm in it just like I'd be, have my desk here at city hall. So there, there are many benefits to this and there's no more VPN. You're just anywhere in the world, if you have internet, you can get your desktop network. So access your files, your programs, everything. So the other increase in the cost is we're including in this lease the firewalls and the backup appliance that were not included in the lease last time. So there's some additional hardware that's inflating that lease this time around.
Is this, is it part of it that if you're offsite using any, any device, will you have the, the multi-factor built in?
Yes, so we're going to use, I hate to say actually exactly what we're going to use, but yes, there'll be two-factor authentication. I, I, not in the public. I don't want the, the bad guys to know everything.
So the amount of ARPA funding we would use is 95, is the 95,000?
Yes, that's correct. 95, 77, 71. It's all, it's about 3,000 more than we had talked about. It's just the way the quotes came back. So it's, it's a little more than we had discussed during the budget process on that. The flip side is the server hardware came in quite a bit less than what we were planning on, so that's good.
So you did nothing. You're going to spend this money over time in repairs? Is that fair to say?
It'll either be in repairs or major failure. So depending on the nature of the, so the systems have redundancies built in. But the problem we have is when we have a failure, it's inevitable, there will be a failure, whether the vendor will be able to supply us hardware at that time at all. So we may have a failure and go to the vendor and say, hey, I need a new motherboard or hard drive. And they say, hey, that, that thing's seven years old. We don't have parts for that anymore. And your cluster is so old now, the news, the new models we have can't even be integrated into that. So you're going to be in a precarious situation if you don't keep this stuff current, basically. And just to provide an idea of how, how this is used, this is used by every department in the city. We have our water and wastewater SCADA servers on this thing. The school department's using it, hence their contribution to the lease payment. It's, it's everything we do in the city that requires computing goes through these servers. So it's, it's a citywide thing.
The library too?
Library as well, yep. We'll actually be able to finally bring them fully on. Right now, they have their own server over there. We do some, some of the things on this. We didn't have room to bring everything. This will allow us to bring all of their stuff as well. That'll be good for them because their setup is not ideal right now.
I think you mentioned, I just wanted, from a security standpoint, right now, this new system will, it will be more secure.
Yeah.
And, and the longer you go with an older system, the potential for some sort of not only failure, but you're also the potential for any kind of ransomware or, or other attacks could, we, the public's information could be at, at greater risk. Is that a fair statement or?
That's a good point, actually. And the other risk of not updating the hardware is, is software support. Eventually, the older hardware, the vendor's not going to write software for it anymore. So if there's a vulnerability in a seven-year-old cluster, there's no, there's really nothing in it for them to write the code to update that cluster. So you need to stay current most of the time with the hardware just to keep current with the software. So, yes.
Other comments, questions? Motion. No motion.
Was there a motion on here? Because I couldn't find it.
I can find it.
It's under my signature.
I can find it. Approve the IT Systems Administrator to purchase IT hardware and software from Gov Connection and enter into a five-year municipal lease purchase agreement with Gorham Savings Bank as presented. Additionally authorized, the city manager to sign any necessary agreements to execute the purchase and/or lease.
Second.
Motion, second. Further discussion?
I just have one quick question. Why do we care if we're going to own the equipment when the lease was done if we're just going to get rid of it because it's not worth anything?
I mean, we guess we, the part of the problem is timing. So once that lease is up, I need to keep that hardware until I get the new hardware. So part of it's, that's a big part of it, I suppose. We could let them take it back, but we'll, we'll keep it. There may be some value. I'll look into that just to be sure there's not. But it's, it's unlikely to be anything of significance. So, and we won't have any use, reuse for it. So we'll probably end up recycling it, but I'll look into that just to be sure. So.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 18, Council Order Number 072304, request of the facilities manager to accept a bid to repair the chimney at city hall. Bids were open on 7/13/23. Do you want to go outside and?
Make an entrance?
Good evening, I'm Chief of Maintenance Facility Management.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. This one is the chimney?
Chimney, yes.
Okay. So you have before you, we put out the bid for the chimney repair. Basically, it's re-topping the chimney here at the city. This, I think back during budget season, I submitted pictures and, and such as the poor degraded state and the water infiltration issues that we're having with the chimney. So we put it out to bid in the paper, on the city website and Facebook page, I think she said. And received two, two bids back. They came in a lot higher than I anticipated. People that I talked to during budget season. One of the contractors, when I contacted him, said, oh, we don't rebuild chimneys, we just repair them. So that kind of eliminated his bid. The second contractor that I talked with, they just never got back to me in time. They're out straight, I guess. So I'm proposing on the two bids that we got to possibly forego the painting project that we budgeted for this year on the trim on the rim around the building and the third-story windows. And using that capital to boost the necessary finances needed to do the chimney. The chimney is, in my opinion, way more important than the painting. I don't know if you recall some of the pictures, but there's some vertical stress cracks in that chimney. You know, there's a potential of that chimney collapsing at some point. I'm not saying it's going to collapse today or, or this month, but you know, if we get a storm with 80 mile an hour winds, that chimney is degraded to a point where it could be an issue. So if we forego the painting, I think that was a $20,000 capital request. And this particular capital request was 25. That would give me 45. I could take the other five out of building and maintenance budget to offset that. Needed 5,700. I think the lowest bidder was, or 6,400. Lowest bidder was 51,400, which would be my recommendation, going with the lowest bidder. Both, both contractors were highly recommended. I checked into both of them through different sources, different contractors in the area that, you know, sub out masons. Both highly recommended, you know, I guess it would be your choice. Questions? What say you?
When can they start?
That is, everybody that I talked to said, what's your timeframe? And I said, you know, as soon as possible, but ultimately before the end of June next year. Whether or not, both of them were several months out. Because of the nature of the project, it is a big project because of the copper roof material. It's not like a residential chimney. Neither, neither of these contractors could give me a, a start date. It would be more after the contract was awarded. But you know, by, by telling them that it would be, you know, before the end of June, you know, this fiscal season it had to be done. And they were all in agreement that that wouldn't be an issue. But whether or not they could get to it this fall was more of, you know, if they were awarded the contract. I didn't really get a warm feeling from either of them at that initial conversations.
Is there harm in delaying the painting? Is the trim going to start rotting out in the next?
It's not going to, it's, it's not going to degrade any more than it already has. I mean, it's, you know, that trim's not easily accessible. I'm, I'm in the hopes, I mean, from my, my experience, you know, it's, it's probably 10 years beyond needing paint. You know, so we may run into a, a, a bigger issue painting than, well, for example, all these windows here when, you know, they're, they have gone way past, they're gone. They're, we're not, we weren't even going to paint the trim on these windows because they need, all the woodwork needs to be replaced. I'm hoping that where most of that trim is a vertical-type trim, instead you have the horizontal platforms on the sills on these windows, that it's in better shape. But I don't think it's really, you know, between the two, I think the chimney is far more important. You know, we get constant water infiltration there, you know, I've replaced, repaired the walls inside where the water's come in and it's already starting to degrade again because of the constant water infiltration through the chimney.
Council, Hal.
Is this a project that has a lot of risk to it when you start the project? That there could be surprise upgrades or surprise needs that this could turn into double the price quickly?
I don't think it'll double it. The only, the only surprise is going to be at what point they hit solid structure when they take the chimney down inside. I mean, they both came in and looked at it and it's going to be an interior-type, interior of the chimney-type examination, looking at the inside, excuse me, the outside of the chimney in the attic. It looked to be in fairly good shape, but it depends on, you know, at what point they can stop when they hit suitable material to build off. And it really appears to everyone that basically it's the roof line. So I mean, that's kind of why it's where it's at. But the only other issue would be any kind of rotten framework in the roof line when they tear it down. Again, looking on the inside, what I can access, it's all solid, it looks good. You know, it's all hemlock built, you know, back in the, in the 30s. So, you know, as you know, hemlock is very water-resistant and it's not submerged in the water. So doesn't appear to me as though there'd be really any surprises.
Thank you.
Sure.
So with these two contractors you base, because I looked up Gendrow and it was more of a residential remodel company than a masonry company. And Knollwoods is very much a masonry company, which in my eyes, you know, I see their work beautiful. I mean, they do a great job.
Yep.
And I get lots of good vibes from those.
Think they're out of?
Three or four of those people live in Ellsworth that I know of that work there. One of the brothers lives in Ellsworth, yeah. Their son live in Ellsworth, pay taxes in Ellsworth. I think the $600 that we spend towards a more masonry-based company would be well offset with the tax money that we get from the employees that live in Ellsworth and the owners and. I just, when I looked up Gendrow, I don't see anything masonry there. I wouldn't put a job that size in the hands of somebody that does house remodels. Not for $600. It's a pretty high ticket.
Oh, yeah?
A lot of stuff can get messed up up there.
That's a big job.
Gendrow is based outside of Ellsworth?
Eddingham.
Do you want to turn that into a motion?
I've moved to contract with Eli Knollwoods for the amount of $52,000, even though that was a higher bidder.
Second.
Motion, second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so stay right there.
I gotta go back out?
19, Council Order Number 072305, request of the facilities manager to accept a bid to replace a section of roofing at the Moore Community Center. Bids were open on 7/13/23.
So once again, we had issue with the remaining asphalt and p-stone roofing on the Moore Community Center. Apparently, it's been leaking for a number of years. Long before my tenure, they've attempted to find the leaks, patch the leaks, to no avail. Again, we put it out to bid in the paper, city website, received four bids back. It's a pretty straightforward, the only exception would be all of your bidders are timing materials for any rotten substrate underneath once they peel back the asphalt and p-stone, Pandora's box. That, I can't give you any kind of idea what they're going to find underneath that. I don't know how long it's been leaking. I know the vast majority of that building has already been done with the rubber roofing. This is the last remaining part of it. It could be a straightforward deal, it could be Pandora's box. And again, the low bidder on this particular case was GR Roofing. And I do believe that they had done, they were the contractor that did the first part of Moore Center roof.
The membrane, right?
Yep, the rubber membrane. So my recommendation was to go with them for this contract, yes, ma'am.
How much did we budget for this?
150.
155. 150, 150,500 is what was allocated in, out of ARPA funding in the budget.
So they all bid exactly the same?
They all got the same, they all got the same bid specs, everything. And GR Roofing and? And GR Roofing and Roof Systems of Maine actually put bids in last year. So once we got the approval for funding this year and did the bid specs up, I sent them the bid specs and said, and asked them to update their bids from last year. GR went down, Roof Systems of Maine went up a few hundred dollars over what they had submitted last year. I think Steve might have requested bids from them before I started.
This is just a motion. Move to contract with GR Roofing to replace approximately 13,000 square feet of roof listed in bid specs for the amount of $140,000.
Have a motion.
Yeah, friendly amendment to be paid for through ARPA funding?
Okay.
Was that already taken from what we've been discussing for the ARPA funding? This is already taken out of that?
That was in the budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a motion in seconds. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Item 20. Council order number 072305 requests the finance director to review and approve the updated city of Ellsworth investment policy.
All right, this is just a little housekeeping. We haven't, according to our wealth management company, Bar Harbor, who keeps our reserves, we haven't had a new investment policy for 20 years, so it seemed like it was time. Primarily because, right now, the way that the markets are, the yield curve is inverted, which means that we are, inflation's gonna go higher. We're at nine now, I mean, depending on who you're looking at, what the measurement is. So I wanted to have an opportunity to be able to hedge some of our reserves using treasuries. And the way that our investment policy is set up now, we can't really do that. We're still holding equity, rather not really right now. We can be doing a lot with short-term paper and keeping the reserves of the city from falling behind with respect to inflation. And it would be, it's not sexy, but it's income and it's, the rates are pretty good. We're in five and six on three-month paper, so that's good. If anyone's investing these days, you can actually do very well in treasuries. And of course, treasuries are the safest, well, considered historically the safest investments, federal treasuries. The city's already doing bond ladders, so I would continue to do that. But basically, holding debt is, in my opinion, the way to go right now, and I just need a policy that's more up-to-date. It's not much change, it's compliant with Title 30A, so, for the state.
Questions?
I'm waiting to see if Tammy approves.
Oh, jeez.
This is not my area of expertise.
Sorry, I thought I had a question on here, but I can't find it.
Did this come before finance committee, or is this the first time?
I haven't seen it before tonight.
Yeah, we just talked about it.
So this is just money that if you have, we have it in the bank?
We do.
You invested in something?
We have reserve funds.
So it gains us more money?
Yeah. Basically, just...
It's not in risk of being lost?
For the same reason that we don't wanna take money down from the tan, we could be making that in interest on our reserves from treasuries, which is insane, because treasuries were...
Meaning it's safe, we're not gonna lose all of our money?
No.
Does it limit liquidity if we need?
Not really. These are the reserve funds, we're looking at three-month turns ladder, so you know, we're not using that money anyway, and it's just sitting there and it's losing value to inflation, so we don't want that. We don't, I don't think we need to be in securities, in equity right now. So we're losing money in equities, so I would rather not be in them. You know, I don't wanna do anything crazy, talking about strips or commodities or anything like that. We don't have to. Basically, right now, we can make money on...
Some of those are disallowed from being used with...
Yeah, that's why I said it's...
Public funds as well, so...
It's compliant with 30A for the state, so it's just updated, basically. There's new products in the market since 2003. The market's changed a lot since then.
Couple of comments. One, it's nice to have someone stand up here and talk about earning the city money instead of spending it. And secondly, it sounds like about a wash for the cost of funds with the tan and the revenue that you earn with the funds without much risk. So it's got to be in balance there, which sounds nice. I know in past years it's been different, but it's better than losing.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I don't know how much everybody knows about me, but this, my background is securities. I spent most of my career in investment, investment banking. So I feel confident in cash management. I feel good about this particular decision. I'd rather not borrow right now. I don't think it's a good environment for borrowing. And, you know, the only reason we have a tan is just for basically emergencies, if we need it.
Ready for a motion? Move to approve the request of the finance director to approve the investment policy statement for municipal trusts and reserve funds?
Second.
Motion, a second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Can we just make one thing on this? This is something, though, that should be vetted through the finance. John, Council Stein was right, that something like this should be discussed with the finance committee for a recommendation to the council on, so that there's more of a clear vision.
Okay.
And also, it's taxpayer dollars that we need and other people's reserves that we need to, and I understand you've got a great background, but I just think that it should be vetted, just in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know the, exactly the process.
It's okay. It's all, it's all changing pretty quickly.
Councilor Powell.
I thought I heard that at the finance.
We talked about it just needing to update it, but I didn't submit the proposal to finance committee?
Got you, okay.
We just kinda talked about it.
But it was thrown out there, right?
Yeah, no, we've talked about it.
So one thing I'd like to see is the old policy compared to the new policy, just so that we can get a, you know, idea of what we have been doing. It would just give the finance committee and the rest of the councils and, you know...
Yeah, you want me to bring it? I can bring it to committee if you like.
The old one, yeah, if you wanna bring it, just...
And it's, as far as I know, it's the last one. It's the only one I've ever found, so I'm assuming it's the last one.
I thought there wasn't one.
2003. I think it is based on the FDIC limit on that particular one. It was consistent with what the limit was back then. So now the limit's at 250.
But I do appreciate that you're updating all of this.
Yeah.
This is great.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't wanna...
I just wanna take advantage of these interest rates while we have them, 'cause who knows where they're going.
It's been a long time since we've had decent investment rates.
Right. It's been under a point forever.
Thank you.
Sure.
Right, I have to go to Augusta tomorrow, so I'm gonna need this to be... And then just give it to Toby.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Item 21. Council order number 072306 requests of the deputy fire chief to use ARPA funding to purchase and install a direct capture vehicle exhaust system.
Good evening, councilors. Doug Beltate, deputy fire chief. I am here tonight on behalf of my staff, but more importantly, on behalf of your community firefighters and your first responders. I'm here to ask for your help into help preventing a form of cancer and from the very, one of the very things that allows us to help do our job, and that's from the diesel exhaust of our vehicles. If you will allow me to indulge with just a little bit of a background for a few minutes. Recently, the International Agency of Research on Cancer has upgraded both diesel exhaust and firefighting from a Class II cancer, which being possibly cancer-causing, to both are now Class I known cancer-causing agents. They have found that occupational exposure as a firefighter causes cancer. A 2008 study on lung cancer and vehicle exhaust in the trucking industry found that evidence suggests that lung cancer mortality rate in workers with a history of regular exposure to diesel exhaust particulates is increased with increasing exposure duration. So basically, the longer you're exposed to diesel exhaust, the greater chances of you dying from lung cancer are. In the article controlling diesel exhaust exposure inside the firehouse, it states that scientific evidence suggests an association between lung cancer and occupational exposure to diesel exhaust emissions. Most modern fire apparatus are powered by diesel engines. By the nature of our job, these engines are often run indoors for various amounts of time and for various reasons. In 2013, OSHA released a report Hazard Alert for Diesel Exhaust and Diesel Particulate Matter. Explains that diesel exhaust contains unburned hydrocarbons, carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxide, and diesel particulate matter. Diesel particulate matter is a soot that is a mixture of carbon ash, metallic abrasion particulates, and sulfates and silicates. More than 95% of diesel exhaust particles are small enough to be inhaled deeply into the lungs and then enter into the bloodstream, which means that they can be circulated to other parts of the body just besides the lungs. Diesel exhaust goes beyond just the apparatus bay floor where the vehicles are kept and ran. They have a tendency to get into the bedrooms, into the living room. You can go downstairs and look, there are several places where, you know, it builds up on the walls and around the vents, and you clean it and it comes back. The International Building Code recommends the installation of a source capture system that connects directly to the motor vehicle exhaust system. NFPA 1500, which is the National Fire Protection Association, Series 1500, is the health and safety. It regulates and pretty much drives all health and safety aspects of the fire service. Chapter 9 asks all fire departments contain all vehicle exhaust emissions to a level of no less than 100% effective capture. The request also complies with NIOSH's requirement to reduce emissions to the lowest feasible level to limit the impact on firefighters' health. NFPA goes on further in chapter 10, section 1.5, stating, "The fire department shall prevent exposure to firefighters and contamination of living and sleeping areas from exhaust emissions through use of a direct or source capture system." Currently, the Ellsworth Fire Department is non-compliant as we do not have a direct capture system or exhaust. At one point in time, the fire department had a floor exhaust system. However, this system does not meet the requirement of a direct capture system and is currently inoperable and irreparable as we have not been able to find anyone that works on this system anymore. It's pretty much obsolete at this point. We contacted three companies to, and asked them to come in and do a review of our station. We contacted Pluma Event, Magna Grip, and Fume Event. Fume Event is a company based out of Missouri. However, they declined to travel to Ellsworth without us first paying for that service, so we politely declined to have them come in. Pluma Event, a well-known company that installs these direct capture systems in multiple fire stations across the country, reviewed the station and submitted a proposal that would expel the content above the roof line of the building using material that would be of similar look to the existing exterior hardware such as the downspouts and drains to preserve the historical aesthetics of the building in the amount of $79,200 and included a one-year warranty of parts and labor from the date of acceptance. Mag to Grip also reviewed the station and submitted a proposal that would expel the contents above the roof line of the building using material that would be of similar look and existence to exterior hardware to preserve the historical aesthetics of the building in the amount of $68,380 and included a seven-year warranty of parts and labor from the date of acceptance to include a free annual service over the life of that warranty. Council Chair Hammerton was absolutely right when he stated earlier how first responders often put their own health at risk to respond to others. I'm asking the members of this council to invest in the lives of the city of, the city's firefighters and approve the expenditure of ARPA funds to allow Magna Grip to install a direct capture vehicle exhaust system not to exceed $70,000.
Questions?
Did this go through the budget? I want numbers here.
No, ma'am, it was not in the budget.
Why didn't you request it through the budget?
We had one, we had one thing on, in the capital expenditure at the time. It got moved and to the rescue, rescue ban expenditure, and so it was not, it was not placed in the budget at the time.
At budget time, you also didn't have the information?
No, I did not, we did not have all the information at the time either.
You didn't have the estimate or anything?
What's, after what we budgeted for ARPA? What's left now?
So, so if you take the ARPA funding that the Moore roof is $10,000, we had budgeted $150,000, so if you put that $10,000 back into ARPA, you take out the $3,000 for the computer that Jason is over from his ARPA, it leaves us with $400,204 in ARPA funding. If you subtract the $70,000 for this potential expense, you're talking, you'll have $330,204 left in ARPA funds.
Say that amount one more time.
$330,204.
And I thought the finance committee was planning on making an ARPA recommendation?
We're in the process of putting that together.
Is this an allowable use?
Yes.
With the new, like, DEF exhaust, does that get rid of a lot of particulates?
Sir?
With the new DEF, does that get rid of a lot of the particulates, like, in the vehicles?
No, sir, it does not. It gets rid of some, but it does not, it does not remove, it does not meet the 100%, you know, and it does not get down to the small micron that is capable of getting into the lungs and into the bloodstreams.
So the DEF is built for after the truck is started and warmed up, whereas the source capture is for that first few minutes? As the truck is starting up is when most of the exhaust particulates are expelled, which is before the DEF takes place, 'cause DEF works when the vehicle starts to warm up. So this would be in that, that point when you hear the trucks downstairs start up, that's the most dangerous part of it. And as they're driving out the building, as soon as they get out to the road, the DEF system starts to kick in 'cause the truck is warmed up. So the most dangerous part is when those trucks start up in the bay before they leave the door.
Councilor Powell.
So to paint this picture, this system hooks into the exhaust when you start your truck. But when you remove that to drive out, you're still putting exhaust in the building?
No, sir. The way it works is, think of it as a big flexible straw that actually hooks to the exhaust system with a magnet, and it's actually on like a rail system. And that straw will stay hooked up to the truck all the way out to the edge of the door, and then when it hits the edge of the door, that magnet releases, and then it's out the door. So it actually captures the exhaust the entire time from startup all the way through the exit of the building.
I don't have questions about the system. It seems like you guys, seems like a necessary item, and it seems like you guys have done your research about the best way to implement, but I guess I would feel more comfortable if it went through this bigger question through the finance committee about what to do with the rest of the ARPA fund. I've always felt a little uncomfortable solving that problem piece by piece as it comes in front of us, so I think this sounds important, and I think finding a way to budget it either through ARPA or through another way makes sense, but it would make more sense to me if we do it through finance committee recommendation.
I would agree. I mean, it's something that you guys should have. I'm just surprised, if your other system isn't working, that it hasn't been brought up before.
We've never had a system that's been compliant, ma'am.
No, I don't, you used to have a system, and then you said it's broken. It's been broken for a while.
There was an in-floor system that is down there, but the in-floor is not a direct capture. Direct capture systems have been around, 25 years ago when I was down south, we had direct capture systems. The in-floor system that they have downstairs is not a compliant as, with NFPA, as a direct capture system.
So I'm not arguing with you?
No, ma'am.
I am agreeing with you. I just... I just, I'm not sure that ARPA funding is how we should do it, and I just would like an opportunity to look and see if there's some other way that we can purchase it for you other than using those ARPA funds.
Councilor Howell, did you have something?
So when you start your truck right now and you're pulling outside as quickly as possible, correct, and doing everything you can outside, is that the way this building has run for all these years?
Unfortunately, yes. You know, but, you know, certain times of the year, you know, trucks have to be started inside and ran inside due to inclement weather and everything, or, you know, and, you know, they still have to go through monthly morning checks, and, you know, depending on weather conditions, you know, sometimes it has to be done inside, and that's where the benefit of the direct capture system and the exhaust system comes into hand, you know, really comes into play is that it allows you to do that without putting, you know, even more at risk.
Did the vendor give any indication of when they would be able to start and complete it?
Roughly should be completed, be able to complete between, within about 90 days once, you know, we're giving the go-ahead.
The City of Brunswick, which you gentlemen probably already know, they built a new facility that was quite impressive, 26,000 square feet for $13.2 million. And I took a trip down there because I wanted to see what $13.2 million bought for 26,000 square feet. They have a similar system there that I had the chance to look at, and that was on slide reels, and it may have been a different, it was the same principle.
Same, exact same principle, yes, sir.
Yeah, and they put it in a brand-new building, and I'm sure it was, it made a lot of sense to do that. And I'm not against it. My question is, where is the fire department going to be in five years? Are we still going to begin this building?
I can tell you with all new construction of the fire station, NFPA, not only do you have to have that type of system, but like where the gear, like their firefighter gear is stored, it has to be in a pressurized, clean, not want to say clean room, but it has to be in a pressurized room to where, when the doors are open, the contaminants stay within that room. So that's part of the reason why, you know, you have that kind of price tag, because with, you know, just like when you build a new building, you have to build according to the newest, greatest codes. Same thing with the new fire stations. I mean, I'm sure Chief has got, has experienced some of the stuff with, when you're building, you have to update some of the stuff according to the new codes for police. Same thing goes with the fire department. You know, when you build those new stations, you have to build to the latest and greatest, you know, compliances. So we're just way, we're way behind the times downstairs in that aspect, especially in this particular, you know, one event that could make a big difference for our guys. Not, probably not tomorrow, but 15, 20 years down the road is where it's going to make a difference. You know, we're talking about saving our guys' lives 20 years down the road, not necessarily tomorrow, but, you know, 20 years down the road is where it'll save their life.
So I agree with Councilman Bill. I definitely support it. I think it's just a matter of, because this is the first time hearing it, so to be able to process it and figure out the best way to move that forward, take a little bit of time to do that. So I think that we need to have those discussions and be able to come back, hopefully next month, and take action on it.
Just for future reference, so there's a, every Friday morning, there's an agenda item for just this purpose, for departments to bring things to the Finance Committee so we can look at financing these projects. So we encourage department heads to utilize that. And then by the time, so when it comes to the meeting, we have a recommendation for everybody, and you don't have to kind of go through this. It's just a way to make things a little more efficient.
Did you get the sense that there was a deposit needed to start the order, the purchase, anything like that? Or just even a month's time of breathing exhaust is not great if we can help it. I know we need to figure out where the finance is coming from, but getting on as quickly is important.
No, I mean, dealing with this company and what I've dealt with so far, I mean, I thank, as long as there was, you know, some guarantee that the money would be there, I think that they would take our word and we could start the process now, but without a guarantee that, you know, the money is there, I wouldn't, I would hesitate, I wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward with it. I mean, I wouldn't want to put the city in that kind of, you know, position either without a guarantee that the, you know, the money's going to be there to pay for it.
How would we go about that?
Well, I think it's the process of just discussing. We have ARPA funds that may be used. You know, for me, it's, I certainly think it's a high priority issue, but it's the first, again, we're just hearing it tonight, so just to be able to look at what are our options to fund it and try to come up with that so that we can, when we put a motion in place, that we know where the resources are coming from, and that there's been some betting of that.
So we have to say exactly where the funds are going to come from, so that's why we can't.
We can't really.
But we all know that we're going to authorize it to be done, but you can't tell them that unless we have a, because you said it's going to be 90 days before. When are they going to start?
I mean, when you tell me that I've got the go-ahead, then I will place the order with them, and...
And it'll be 90 days from then?
Roughly 90 days, and it'll take, I think it's going to take about two weeks to install the complete system.
Does anybody want to take any action, or are we comfortable just, I don't want to just move past it if somebody wants to make a motion. Now would be the time to do so. Otherwise, we'll carry it forward to the Finance Committee, have some discussions, and bring it back to the full council next month.
So can we move, like to move to table this till the August meeting to make sure that it does come back, and then the Finance Committee will make that decision to make a recommendation?
Can we have a motion to table?
Second.
Second. So there's no discussion on a motion to table? All in favor? Unanimous? So it's tabled till next month?
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Sir, when your vehicles come back, are you connecting this when you back them in as well?
Yes, sir.
So going out, they're covered, coming in, they're covered?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other multiple?
Yes, sir. There would be six drops. We have four vehicles on the front, and we actually have, there'd be two drops on the backside. We currently have one vehicle, but that would also give us room for expanding another vehicle on the backside. So it would give us the total of six vehicles to be allowed to be hooked up to one system.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item 22, Council Order Number 072306 requests the City Planner and City Manager to apply for federal financial assistance under the provisions of the Land and Water Conservation Fund, known as LWCF Act Public Law 88-578, in support of conservation of 279.1 acres of land adjacent to the Branch Lake public water supply and expansion of low-impact recreational opportunities. Entender into an LWCF project agreement with the state subsequent to federal approval of the project and adopting a resolution stating such.
I know you love my agenda.
Every time, right the longest.
Sometimes they're required. Just a quick recap, so March, a couple months ago, it came before the council requesting permission to apply for two grants, the Land and Water Future Fund grant and the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for the purchase of 279.1 acre lot on the eastern side of Branch Lake to use, replace in our conservation easement with our partners at Frenchman Bay Conservancy, to then expand recreational opportunities within the city, and essentially just a trail system that would reach to an already-owned city lot, which is currently unused. And the council authorized the application, but as I went through the LWCF process, so first, we did Land and Water Future. Since then, Frenchman Bay and I have applied and been awarded the first half of the funding through Land and Water Future, and we began work on the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. And as part of that grant, there's specific language that has to be adopted to move forward with the application officially. The application has been turned in. I've been in conversations with staff through LWCF, and they're happy to accept the application that we turned in as long as we get approval from council adopting the specific language tonight. Just a little bit of history for LWCF uses within the city. The same language has been adopted multiple times before for different projects, including the Meyer Field, Harbor Park, and the senior fitness equipment at Molton Park. I'll walk through each part of that. What's sort of the resolution in a minute? And then, yeah, so tonight, I'm just requesting that the council just approve the specific language of this resolution. The first part is authorizing the application, which would allow the city manager to, if funds are awarded, to enter into the Land and Water Conservation Fund project agreement with the state pending that approval. And the second portion is the appropriation of local funds, which the goal is that if both grants are awarded, there will be no local funds used. If for some reason the city does not get this grant, Frenchman Bay Conservancy and I are prepared to move forward with other grants or to do fundraising through the nonprofit. So again, no taxpayer funds should be used, but it's just a requirement of the grant. And the third part's the authorization to borrow the necessary funds to cover anticipated reimbursement. The grant is just for the upfront purchase of the property, so there should, and I've been told that my amount requested is much larger than others that people come for for reimbursement, so it shouldn't be a problem to pay that up without borrowing money.
What are we talking?
So the half would be $92,500.
Move to authorize the City Planner and City Manager to apply on behalf of the City of Ellsworth for federal financing assistance under the provisions of the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act Public Law 88-578 for the fee simple acquisition of 279.1 acres of land for the Branch Lake expansion, and further authorize the City Manager to enter into the Land and Water Conservation Fund project agreement with the state subsequent to federal approval of the project. Number two, if the City of Ellsworth tax appropriations are being used for all or part of the local share of the project cost, the city must raise the funds through council action. And the City of Ellsworth is obligated to pay all costs of the project upfront, therefore there may be the need to authorize borrowing of funds, which will be repaid by federal reimbursement. Is that the whole thing?
Yep.
Now, you know, all right. We have a motion?
Second.
Have a second discussion. When we talk about upfront, is that the project will have been approved, the funding is guaranteed, it just may mean that we have to float the payment before we get...
Correct. There's a lot of grants that the city gets a reimbursement style on.
I read the reimbursement was like three to four weeks, or three to five weeks?
Four to six weeks, yeah.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? One opposition, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 23, City Council Appointments.
Just to point this one out.
These are additional from June.
This is just for the Board of Appeals.
Do you want this whole whereas statement?
Could you just make a motion to appoint Steve Salisbury? Can we make a motion to appoint Steve Salisbury to the Board of Appeals, expiring 6/30/2028?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 24, Counselor Comments. Any counselors have any, take this time to comment on anything that you'd like? Councilor Howell?
Two things. One, the budget process that we recently went through, there was a substantial increase to the cost of the taxpayers. And I'm wondering, much like Glenn did in his office, he repositioned things, and we wound up with a little bit of help from him and a communications director from that move. And I'm wondering if there could be some repositioning with our Public Works Director leaving, if there could be some repositioning of city staff to not replace that position and push the cost of government down. I'm not suggesting that that is, I don't know her job, I don't know any of that, but it looks to me like this might be a great opportunity to move things around like you did in your office, and perhaps reduce a salary without affecting a family. When we went through the budget process, we heard that the last thing that there was was personnel cuts to drive the budget down, and the budget passed. It was a substantial increase. I just wonder if, when we have a vacancy, if it wouldn't be a good idea to look at repositioning and see if there's a way that we could get by without that salary.
I was kind of thinking that too. It might be a way to save some, if it were possible.
I read here, I don't, you know, I don't know her functions and all of that, and you do, but you did that in your office. You maneuvered and got more for the same dollars, and I wonder if there's not some maneuvering that could happen here with that salary. I think it's worth looking at.
Any other counselors want to make a comment?
Just saying two things?
You did, you did say two things.
What are you writing?
We were just waiting.
All right, I'll hit you with the second one. Second one is surplus equipment. I don't know how much surplus equipment is laying around the city, but with this cost of this budget that was passed, there's got to be thousands of dollars in surplus equipment laying around the city that could be turned into cash. And I'm speaking broadly, that there's got to be some funds there that is just collecting dust, from Public Works to, I realize that we have no control over the school, but the school buses stacked up everywhere that are supposedly unfit for use, and probably there's many more things that we're not seeing and driving by that might take a second look. Okay, all right.
You met your quota.
Okay. All right. Item 25, Executive Session pursuant to one MRSA, Chapter 405, 6A for Personnel Matters to Discuss Contractual Issues for Appointed Officials.
Move to go into Executive Session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor? Opposed? We will be going into Executive Session, and we will be reporting out. We will be going into executive session, and we will be reporting out.
Late, too late.
Too late, okay.
Gotta go.
All right, so we are back from executive session. So I would like to make a motion that we accept an employment transition agreement with manager The agreement will provide the city with the opportunity to start recruiting for a city manager and that manager Moser will return to the role of chief of police for